Select Board this evening. We're convening Monday, February 11th at the Bennington Fire Facility. What we always do is introduce ourselves, so I'll start with Gene down here next to Stu Hurd, our town manager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Gene Connor.
Good evening, Carson Thurber.
Good evening, Jim Carroll.
Hi, I'm Donald Campbell.
Hello, I'm Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Nancy Lyman, September 2.
Thank you, thank you, particularly Nancy. Um, Chad, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chad. Before we get into the business of the meeting of the evening, we do have the second continuing public hearing on the proposed amendments to the Charter of the Town of Bennington. I think last week we read into the record the sections that apply relative to the change in the Charter. We would welcome comments by anyone that has signed up, or if you want to sign up, but get the opportunity, please feel free. So if you would like to come up to our table there, just give us your name and your address, and we'll, either one, I think they both work, right? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Is this okay? My name is Dave Crowley, I live in Bennington. My comments on the mayoral issue. In a representative of a democracy, the citizens elect representatives from among themselves. Everyone on this board is a Bennington resident, I assume, and was voted for and in by Bennington residents. That's the definition of democracy. A quick look at the 2016 election showed that the three people who were voted in won nearly 5,000 votes out of a possible 8,500. It's a pretty clear majority. It's almost a mandate. There were people on the ballot who did not garner enough votes to be elected, and those folks were on the side of the mayoral issue at that time, and they did not get enough votes to get in, as seen by the population. The other definition of democracy is that, you know, you enter an election and you lose by finding out exactly how many people don't agree with you. Something I don't envy anybody. I don't think you can keep moving the goalposts until you win. At some point, I think you have to listen to the voices of the majority. One of the issues here seems to be an issue of transparency and access. In situations like this, I go to the, whenever I go to a wedding or meet a newlywed couple, I always try to tell them that the most important thing in a relationship is to speak up. If something bothers you, speak up. You got a question, ask it. You got an issue, address it. The longer you leave these things to fester and you get all angry and stuff, the worse it gets. It's not the way to communicate. This board provides two opportunities a month for anybody to come in here and talk to you and find out answers to their questions, or at least start the process of getting them answered. When I was applying for the Charter Commission, this recent rewriting of it, I made a point of asking everyone on the Select Board if it worked, if the system worked. And there were people on the Select Board who didn't necessarily agree with me, this was a different crew than you guys, didn't necessarily agree with me and my political position, but every person to a person said, yes, it works. And it does work. It's accessible, and the transparency issue isn't an issue for me, but I think that, you know, reasonable dialogue can produce the kind of answers that we need. Thanks.
Thank you much, very much, Dave. We have Lynn Green, you decide.
Hi, I'm Lynn Green, and I actually just wrote down a few notes that I'd like to read regarding the mayoral form of government. I've lived in Bennington for approximately 14 years, and I am in support of our current form of government, and I'm against changing over to a mayor. I have many reasons, but I'll limit my comments to just a few to give others a chance to be heard. First, the town manager is charged with running the day-to-day affairs of the town. His job is obtaining bond financing, managing the budget, managing the town's workforce, managing roads, parks, and other public works. The Select Board currently hires a town manager based on criteria for education and work experience. The only requirement for a mayor is that he or she win the popular vote. The mayor position comes with no requirement for skills, education, or experience. And secondly, the Select Board can also fire a town manager with 90 days' notice. If we have a mayor that we don't like, he or she cannot be voted out of office until his term is up. With the Select Board, we have a continually rolling election process where we replace Select Board members every couple of years. Third, not all change is good change, and for those of you that think giving a mayor a try couldn't hurt, I think it's really important to know the level of disruption that upending our current form of government will have on the day-to-day business of our town. Sometimes it's tempting to want change for the sake of change, and our current form of government may not be perfect, but we all have the opportunity to vote seven Select Board members in or out of office based on their vision. The Select Board then works with the town managers, manager, to administer that vision. And to uproot and replace our current form of government is a serious undertaking and a huge distraction at a time when we need all eyes on economic growth. Cutting off one's head is hardly an acceptable remedy for a headache. Dissolving our current form of government is not a winning formula for Bennington's future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. I noticed that there are no other signatories, but if someone would like to speak to the issue, this is the second public hearing, will be the last opportunity, so I see two hands. Gene, would you like to speak first?
All right. I'll be brief, because I'm here to talk about something else. My name's Gene Rutzowitz, and I'm a resident of Bennington. Well, I won't go into history and studying civics classes, but today's towns need town managers. I think we have enough evidence of what happens when someone with no experience to perform the duties required takes an office, and what a disruption it could be. I don't want to get too political, but we can think of great mayoral rules, like think of Mayor Daley in Chicago and others. Let's leave the history, but we need a person who, I'm very happy electing my neighbors to represent me, but to carry out the day-to-day operations of a town, these days especially, you need a professional who's hired by the Board to do the many things that a town manager has to do.
Thank you, Gene. Joey, would you please?
Hello, Joey Colkin.
Hi, Joe.
How are you?
Good, thanks.
Congratulations on the Patriots.
Good job, Tom.
So, I think the previous speakers are kind of blurring the lines, and I want to set the record straight. The March 5th vote, can you confirm Chairman Jacobs, is not a vote for the mayor, we're simply voting to open the Charter. Right now, it says we shall have a town manager. And the vote on March 5th says, we're just writing in that we could also, one day, maybe have a mayor, correct?
I'm not going to enter a dialogue with you, Joey, but I can tell you, the Charter amendment speaks for itself.
Okay, so basically, that is what the vote is on March 5th, not for a mayor. It's a three-step process. We wouldn't vote for a mayor for two more years. This vote on March 5th is simply writing into the Town Charter that we, one day, might want a mayor. Because one day, if we do want a mayor, the Charter has to say, give us the option to have a mayor. So I hope all the folks at home will remember that. On March 5th, we are not voting for a mayor. We simply want to write into the Charter, one day, we want the option to either have a town manager or have a mayor. And then, in a couple of years, we'll discuss it for a year, and then a year later, we'll vote on it.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to the issue people? I welcome Select Board members, if you feel so inclined, you don't feel that you have to speak to it, because you've heard from a couple of citizens tonight, and I think it's really incumbent upon each and every one of us as citizens to get as much information as we can, make our own decisions. I really don't want to prolong the hearing unless you feel that it's particularly necessary. Is there, I would like to close the hearing unless you want to continue another. Gene, what's your feeling to close the hearing?
We should close the hearing.
I need a motion for that purpose.
I move that we close the hearing.
And a second for that?
Second.
Discussion on the motion to close the hearing. Hearing, no further discussion, all in favor of closing the hearing, signify by aye.
Aye.
Seven in favor and no opposition to that. I thank you, folks. We'll move right to the consent agenda that's been circulated, contains the minutes of the January 28th and the February 4th meetings, respective meetings. I will be recusing myself from the January 28th meeting because I was not at that meeting. I think on February 4th, Carson, you were away, right?
I was away, as you want to.
Okay. It also contains the warrants, which have been circulated for review and signatured. I will be entering my signature upon the approval of the consent agenda, but I have a motion for the consent agenda being adopted.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
Discussion on the consent agenda. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Please note my abstention from January 28th and Jim's abstention from the February 4th and Carson's abstention from participating in the February 4th. Yeah, okay. We now have the opportunity for public comment, and we have, Bill Stewart?
Good evening, folks. My name's Russell, I'm in room 27, Bedford Street, and I'm sure everybody knows why I'm here tonight. In the last two weeks, we've had a little debacle, like most debacles that go on in this town. The same one for about the last 15 years, but over the last five years, I've got about five years of video of one tractor-trailer driver that has been out of control in front of my house. Now, I've got probably about 100 hours of video of this one trucker that gets upset with me because I videoed him driving badly. Now, his name is Lucie Trucking, and I'm sure Stu Hurd knows exactly who I'm talking about, because I've talked to him many, many times, and I've talked to Mr. Jacobs about his behavior. Now, this truck driver has been going on for the good last five years, nonstop. Every time I take video of him, he has a problem with me and berates me, and I berate him back. He shouldn't be driving, and he's still one of the biggest tractor-trailers in this water debacle. Now, this one tractor-trailer driver has yet to be held accountable for any of his actions, kind of like our town manager, not held accountable for any of his actions. Now, this truck driver is still coming to this aquifer, and I'm still trying to figure out the connection why Stu keeps putting up with letting this truck driver come in here, and why he's not been removed from this tractor-trailer service at the front of my house. The problem exists is, there's some connection between this truck driver and Stu, because I've got emails with Stu, all he does is say how great this truck driver is, and he's, you know, this and that, when everybody else has been removed from this tractor-trailer service, but this one truck driver. And I've got so much video of it, it's not even funny, and I've sent it to just about all of you many, many times. My question is, why is this tractor-trailer still coming in at the front of my house, berating me when I video him driving badly, and he's still here?
Did you, was there a confrontation that included your wife or your significant?
Yeah, my brother watched it from the front door. All the video in the world that you say you can't see, she was watching it as it went on for the first time in plain sight. So my question is, why is this guy still here? And if we got to keep going on with this, I've had just about enough of it. And Mr. Hurd has sent me many emails. All he does is contradict all that goes on with this, and this truck driver is still coming there. And he still drives badly, except for I'm not there to catch him now, because I went back to work. But the video still shows it. He does everything he possibly can, and by the way, he idles for the whole half an hour he's there when no one else idles, even in the winter.
Don't we have an anti-idling statute or ordinance?
He shouldn't be idling ever, and his truck is still the one of the biggest trucks that come into that aquifer. Now, you and I talked, Mr. Jacobs, about this, and I thought this was handled, but the bottom line is, is Stu protects this truck driver for some reason, and I'm going to find out why. I am engaging right now as we speak, and this is not going to go much farther, because I'm not going to keep putting up with this tractor-trailer drag stripping out of the front of my house. And now, he's been in there twice every day since this whole thing started and never ended. Never stopped. He made excuses for this tractor-trailer driver on his own behalf, but we're going to find out, because lawyers are going to find out why and how this is going on.
Was there police involvement in any of it?
Yes, there was police involvement. As the day he pulls in, apparently, he knows the town workers. He called the town worker to meet him there before he showed up. So the town worker waited for him to show up. I got it on video, I stood up front and watched it. As the truck driver showed up, this guy got out of the truck, he gave me the finger behind his back, I told him, I'm not putting up with it no more. The town worker called the police on me. So, not the truck driver, the town worker. So now, he's got town workers protecting him too, and I'm not going to have it no more. I am telling you right now, face up, I have a lawyer, it's on it, and I'm going to press forward with this whole situation, only because our town manager refuses to do anything about it. Now, we've talked about it, I'm sure, why haven't you guys all talked about it? Something needs to be done about this Lucie Trucking. And if he comes to where you move the aquifer and keeps doing this like this, we're going to have problems where he is getting the water on Main Street. But this truck driver is probably the worst truck driver, and the reason why this aquifer is being moved, and I have fought for it, is because of this truck driver. If this truck driver was removed back when he should have been removed, we probably wouldn't be going through any of this that we're going through right now.
How many different truck drivers show up? How many different truck drivers?
During the day now, there's five different trucks that come from, five to six that come actually from Crystal Rock. All the other big trucks do not show up anymore. But this truck driver shows up every day around 9:15 and around 1:15, 1:30 in the afternoon. The problem is whether he's being behaving now, because Stu has told him to stop behaving badly for like the umpteenth time. The problem is, is why does this truck driver have a seniority over everybody's problems? This guy shows up no matter what he does, how he does it, when he does it. And just because he's slowed down now doesn't mean that I have so many hours of this guy doing the same thing for the last five years. And the evidence is going to show what's been going on, and why hasn't Stu removed this guy from that route, is my question. Now, we asked, Tom, Mr. Jacobs, you and I talked about this. We don't need to discuss it, but you understand what I'm talking about, and he's still showing up.
May I ask, is there, can we put a no-idling sign?
We've already, we've asked all of the drivers that use the facility not to idle their trucks.
Right. It is against law.
In most cases, it's not necessary for them to pump the water from the spring with their trucks idling. There may be some older trucks that require that, but as far as I know...
These are all brand-new trucks.
As far as I know, no one idles, so what Bill is telling me tonight is disturbing, and I will take it up...
He does it because he's aggravating, and that's what he does. That last time we had the problem, he likes to back it in and back it out, back it in, back in, back out, back in. He does it because it vibrates the house, and he knows it. That's why the police were there last time. I got him on video, took him nine minutes to back in there, because he's seen me shovel in my driveway. So he likes to aggravate me, and that's what he does, because he's been doing it for the last, I've got five years of video of this guy aggravating me, because he doesn't like me videoing him.
If I can say this...
I'm not this guy gone.
Well, I understand that, Bill. The fact of the matter is, I don't think he does this because it's you...
I know. I figured you'd say that, Stu.
Well, that's all I can say, but I can tell you that the town worker was there to check on the infrared system. He was not there because Mr. Lucie had called him or because Mr. Lucie had arranged it.
You can say whatever you want.
That is the truth.
You're not there to watch this, Stu. Man!
You can think whatever conspiracy theory you want, but the truth is, my employee was there to check on the infrared system because we've had some concerns about its operation, and that's why he was there. It was coincidence, unfortunately, but it was coincidence.
But he's still coming, Stu, and the problem was that he was not, Mr. Jacobs said to me, this man was going to be removed for his bad behavior, and five years of bad behavior is more than enough to remove this tractor-trailer driver. I know he needs a job, we all need a job, but when you go, if I had done what this guy does on my job site, I'd been gone immediately. But this guy continues for 15 years, driving bad, as badly as I've ever seen a tractor-trailer driver. But you must talk to him, and you must smile about it, because if you don't talk to this guy, then how does he keep coming to this aquifer?
Well, I do, I do, I have a contact, I called him, I talked to him about the situation that we most recently...
I'm going to show you so much video, it's going to contradict everything you're saying right now.
I can't contradict it, I called him on the phone, but nonetheless, I talked to him, I asked him to back off, to not engage with you, just as I asked you to not engage with him.
He gets aggravated because I video him, driving badly.
I asked him to not engage with you. If, in fact, he continues to engage with you, then I will attempt to deal with the people who he contracts for. He's a contract driver.
That's the problem, here's another question. Crystal Rock was a problem already, we already know it was an illegal contract. Who's the contract with Lucie Trucking?
Let's not start to the point here, I think a point's been made, really, at this particular point. Bill, you know, I empathize with you, frankly, and I expect that anyone that contracts with us to respect our citizens, and if that's not happening, then that person will not be entering into our community to perform a service here. So if our town manager is going to monitor that situation, if you're not satisfied with it, please come back to us again. I apologize for you having to do that, but frankly, the matter is, we have to deal with this.
Mr. Jacobs, I've been here so many times about this tractor-trailer driver. It just keeps a blind eye being turned every time I'm here to talk about this guy. And it has nothing to do with hatred for this guy, it's the way he behaves, driving a 20-ton water truck in front of my house.
Thanks, Bill.
I hope something gets done about this, because I'm not going to end it with just being shut off every time we talk about this.
No, I understand, appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Rutzowitz, you're back.
Gene?
Well, any hopes I had of running for town council have disappeared. I'm Gene Rutzowitz. I've been living in Bennington since 1974. Where shall I start? We bought our current house on Maryland Street in 1993, and the town certification paper said that we are connected to town sewer and water. So we paid our town sewer and water rates for the following 25 years, usually on time. Imagine my surprise when, early last summer, I walked out into my backyard and found a huge crater, at the bottom of which was a disintegrated metal septic tank. Great idea, to make a metal septic tank, I suppose, and put corrosive fluids through it. But in any case, I then discovered that we weren't on the town sewer and water, although we had been paying rates for the past 25 years. So, I got in touch with the town offices, and the first response to, I suggested perhaps I could get some kind of a refund on the things that I paid for a service that hadn't been granted, and the first response, may have been made up on the spot by the receptionist, was, the town policy is we can't go back more than one year. Which may be the town policy, but still doesn't make me feel whole. In the course, I, activity, we got the sewage service in. Over that installation, that was $10,000 for the sewage work, $1,000 for the engineering, almost another $1,000 for permits, and we were hooked up to the, we're now members of the town sewer system. However, in the course of the 25 years, I've paid nearly $5,600 in sewer rates, and what I'm asking for is either cash refund, or my last offer to Mr. Hurd, who I might say has been more polite about this throughout the case, more polite than I have with the tone of my letters, but in my last letter to him, I suggested that instead of a cash refund, perhaps the town could see its way clear to give me a credit on property taxes for a year, which is about the same amount of money, between $5,000 and $6,000. So...
And that's still the offer?
Pardon me?
That's still your offer?
Well, I don't know, unless you want to, I don't want to go into the whole $12,000 project, all I'm asking for is the rates that I paid back.
Okay. Hold on, just a second. What is the town's responsibility and what is our ability as a Select Board?
Well, unfortunately, Mr. Rutzowitz has actually said it clearly. We rely on the statute having to do with tax rebates. When a property is erroneously taxed, the statute provides that we can go back one year. It does not provide for going back further than that. So if, in fact, and I would argue that Mr. Rutzowitz, if he's going to look for a long-term credit, he probably should be looking for a credit on his sewer rather than taxes.
I don't have another 25 years.
I understand that, I understand that, but the fact of the matter is, the sewer fund is a separate entity, so you've paid into the sewer fund, it's not been part of the general fund, which is where your taxes generally go, but that's neither here nor there. I think in this particular case, we generally don't go back further than one year, and unless this board is willing to ask us to do that, I feel my hands are tied.
Can you give any accommodation to helping defer the $12,000 that Rutzowitz has paid? Can we assist them by reimbursing or helping with that?
If you wish, yes.
But the work's already been done, right?
The work is done.
So the opportunity to help at the curbside is gone.
Yeah, and I think we made an offer of some $2,100 or something, which would have been the cost that we would have been involved in, in allowing him to connect, which is to do the tap, permit fee, those things. But Mr. Rutzowitz rejected that.
Yes.
And I don't have a problem with him rejecting it, I can understand his feeling on that.
That would be not charging me for the connection, which had never been made in the first place.
Explain the $12,000, please.
Pardon me?
Explain the $12,000 you just...
Well, I, in order to get sewage, I had to pay $10,000 to the septic company, plus another $1,000, $1,000 for engineering fees, and additional state and local licenses, you know.
Stu, explain how he was being billed for sewer and water when he wasn't getting it. How the hell did that happen? I have no idea. Well, can we say? I can tell you that the prior owners were also paying municipal sewers, so they thought they were on the municipal sewer system. And they weren't? Yeah, this goes back, I mean, it goes back before 1993. When that development was installed, most of those homes were connected. This home was apparently not, and it may have to do with the elevation of the home with relation to the sewer, I don't know. He is somewhat below where the municipal sewer sits, when you go out and you look at the property. So for all intents and purposes, town staff were taxing him based on what they assumed was the right thing.
And what the prior owner is.
How much did you pay over the years in water and sewer?
$5,600.
Well...
I think you said $5,600 more or less.
Let me see. I did happen to have, when I want some, that I don't have it, but I happen to have enough sewer bills to go back to 1993 to reconstruct. So I have my quarterly payments here going back to 1993, and the total was $5,577.78, as near as I can figure. The town might have a better figure.
So do you have a septic system in there now? You're not...
No, here's what happened. We had to install two separate wells with macerators and pumps to pump the affluent up to the street level.
I see.
So that's where the $10,000 came in, and the other $1,000 was for the engineering plan to design the system. The other option, I said, what about a new septic tank? And the service said, well, that's possible, but currently, you'd have to put it above ground with a hump, and it would cost $20,000 to $24,000.
Okay.
So I said, "Maybe we should go with this other system."
All right, I wanna make a suggestion among our board members. I think this guy ought to get his fifty-six hundred bucks.
This should be a hot topic if we're gonna take a decision on it.
Because here's the other thing, because anything we do, we're going against our statute and our precedent.
So we aren't allowed to do that?
Yeah, but not tonight, in a citizen's comment, we'll have to go into an agenda-
Because that's a service that he didn't get.
Right, and we've been working with him, Jim, for a while and giving suggestions, so, no, no, Tom and I, so, we're working on some different suggestions, but I think we probably have to have it do an open session.
What'd you say, Gene?
You came and talked to us last year or previous year?
We got a letter.
Just a lot of letters.
We got a letter.
Oh, you got one of my mean letters.
At this point, this is citizen comments, not an agenda item, I think this really rises to that level.
Let me give my bottom line, is I'm asking the board to please take a look at the policy and come to a fair resolution. Two things I wanted to say, I didn't look into the state law regarding taxation, but in this, I mean, this is a payment for a service. I mean, it might generally come under taxation, but I wasn't thinking what you're paying for.
And I appreciate that, and that's a really good comment to have in discussion during agenda, as an agenda item, because we hate to pay for something we don't get, but you know, it goes back now, what, twenty?
Well, the other thing was, on the process on the road, I was supposed to come back to the town within a year and tell them, "Hey, I don't have sewage, sewer connection." Now, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that until I walked out into my backyard. And the town water department had to do some dye testing to see whether there was any connection or where they might make a connection. And the sewage company checked with video and said that I was not connected and never had been connected to the town system.
I don't think there's any dispute on that, I think the fact of the matter is how it can be remedied by the board, if you can.
Thank you for your consideration.
No, it's, thanks, Jim.
Could you just clarify, I just, I don't want you to walk away before I ask. Are you water, did you, you're not connected to water or sewer?
He is now.
No, no, prior, prior, would you have water?
Apparently town water, because it's coming from somewhere, we don't have a water-
Well, no, no, you're chuckling at that because I was just trying to find out if you had town water.
He does, sir.
Okay.
Go figure.
Thanks, very much. That's, so, from the, to the mundane of the 2018 audit.
Stuart, are there any other cases that we're not aware of?
No.
You're sure of that?
Not that I'm not aware of, I mean-
Stuart's not aware of it, the property owner has not told us about, you know, so we don't believe that right.
Yeah, I mean, this is a subdivision that was developed in the nineteen late sixties, early seventies. At Jefferson Heights, we assumed everybody was connected to municipal water and sewer. And apparently the prior owner thought it was on municipal water and sewer as well.
Has, has someone checked?
Okay, let's move on here, folks, public comments ended, we're going into the audit, Steve Love from- Love, and Cody, please share your wisdom with us. Welcome. We're talking with our town accountant relative to the results of the audit for 2018. Over the last couple of years, we've been getting more bullet points rather than exhausting review. And I think it's been much more informative than previous years when, by the end, we didn't realize, we were, those of us who were awake relative to the audit. But now, the last couple of years, this report has been very clear and concise, and you're gonna hit the highlights tonight?
Yeah, we're gonna try to keep it a little quicker. I did give you the same packet of slides as last year, but we'll just kind of skip through several of them. I always start with just, you know, reminding everyone that the responsibility for the financial statements really rests with management. And our responsibility as auditors are to evaluate internal controls and test transactions and do enough audit work to be satisfied that the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that we have, and we're happy that that is the case with this year's statements. And if my, this isn't gonna work again this year. Lovely. That always works great at my home, you know.
Yeah, all right. Been there, done there.
All right, well, I'll move over this one if I may.
Feel free, Steve, if you wanna move the mic over and just use the fingers.
Yeah, all righty. So, let me see if I can get this to- So we'll move on, sorry about that. So again, the town's financial statements are made up of two parts, the government-wide statements and then the fund statements. And the first couple of slides just look at the government-wide statements. And what you can see is, and that's all of the, for the governmental ones, this is all of the non-proprietary funds, so the general fund, and the other special revenue funds. And on this statement, it includes all of the assets of the town as well as all of the liabilities. And so as you can see, the largest asset of the town in, from the government-wide side, on the, is the capital assets. And council notes receivable and cash being probably the next largest pieces. So where's all of our money going? It's in all of the infrastructure and assets that the town has. As far as the liabilities on the government-wide side, bonds and notes payable are just under ten, or nine and a half million at this point. Net investment in capital assets, so that's capital assets, net of debt is at about seven million. Net pension liability of two hundred and eighty-two thousand for the Beamers. And our net assets unrestricted, net position of a little over five billion. And comparing, last year we looked at a few towns, cut back this year to just comparing Bennington, Manchester, and Brattleboro. And it's pretty clear that if you look at the capital assets being the largest part for the town, and if you look at Brattleboro, of course, they're significantly higher, as well as their bonds payable and net position. Manchester being smaller than Bennington, and so a little bit less on each of those.
Can you define capital assets for those of us who are-
Sure, the capital assets would be all the buildings, the infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, all the vehicles, town buildings. So anything you think of as a fixed asset, a capital asset is included in those numbers. And this is on the business-type activity statement here, so this is for the proprietary water and sewer funds in this particular slide.
Why is it a good thing that our capital assets are lower in ratio as opposed to Brattleboros?
Well, these are just absolute dollars, not as a ratio here on this particular slide. So Brattleboro is just as, they're a bigger city, town, and have a lot more invested in capital assets. And by the same token, their bonds and other liabilities are also significantly larger than Bennington. So looking at the business-type activities, in this case, these are looking at some of the percentages. What are our liabilities as a percentage of our total assets? And Bennington's right at about forty-five percent, and Manchester at fifty-two percent, and Brattleboro at forty-three percent. So they tend to be fairly consistent. When we were on the government, and Manchester has more of theirs invested in, on the proprietary fund side, the water and sewer. If we look back at the government side on an earlier slide, they were down like eighteen percent for liabilities as a percentage of total assets, but that's because they've got so much more invested in the capital assets on the proprietary fund side. Bennington's kind of even between general fixed assets and the proprietary fund fixed assets. And looking at the statement of activities for the governmental funds, and again, this is looking at it on a full accrual basis, so we're not looking at long-term debt and fixed asset, payments of fixed asset and purchases of capital assets aren't included in this view. This is the same way you look at a business enterprise. And so you can see that the lion's share of our expenditures are in the highways and roads, followed by general government and just a little bit less towards police. But those are the big three pieces of where we're spending our money. And then again, that's not at the fund basis, but at the government-wide. As far as the revenues, property taxes at eleven million, just over, under eleven million, a hundred thousand. And capital grants, and operating, well, operating grants are the next biggest piece there. And that's where our revenue's coming from to offset the expenditures. As far as the, on the enterprise funds, the water is the big spender at two million one. Sewer coming in a million seven seventy-two, and parking, kind of an insignificant fund, but it's, costs us twenty thousand dollars in parking fees, or cost to maintain parking. The revenue for those are almost all charges for services, there are some occasionally grants coming in, but for the most part, water and sewer are paid for by the users of the systems. And that's the way proprietary funds are intended to be operated and how they're supposed to pay for their work. Now looking at the general fund, so this is more of the traditional view of looking at the government statements. So the general fund expenditures for capital assets are treated as an expense rather than depreciation on the government-wide statements. Payments for debt are considered an expense rather than reducing the liabilities that would be on the other. So looking at the general fund assets, cash being the largest piece of it, at a little over two-point-two million. And that is primarily because, for the most part, the cash of the town is maintained in the general fund. So it's also offset by, when we look at the liabilities on the next slide, they do to other funds, is at about a million one. So of that, two million two cash in the general fund, a million one hundred thousand of it in effect is owed to other funds. Accounts payable, just under four hundred thousand, and accrued liabilities at about three hundred fifty-five thousand are the big pieces of the general fund balance sheet. Looking at the fund balance component, the general fund has restricted fund balance of two point, call it two-point-two million. Unassigned fund balances at a deficit of seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, and committed fund balance at two eighty-two. On the next slide, we can see what the restrictions on the general fund balance are, what we have set aside for different projects, typically either by voter or someone outside of the town putting a restriction on it. So the big ones there are getting ready for reappraisal, it's seven hundred and thirty-five thousand. Public safety, well, that doesn't have that much, but Ninja Pathway, there's two hundred and thirty-nine thousand reserved for that. Capital facilities, about three hundred and fifty thousand. So those are all monies that have been, in effect, set aside, but there's a component of fund balance that's being held for those purposes.
No, 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 we're getting a presentation, if we have any questions, we'll ask them. And if there's some question that is relevant, we'll listen to it, okay? But first, we gotta hear the presentation, okay? Go ahead, please.
Okay, so general fund revenues, again, property taxes at just over eleven million. And on down the line, the other largest piece is intergovernmental revenues of a little over a million. And then you can see what makes up the rest of the general fund revenues. We'll look at some trends on the general fund revenues then. So that's going back for six years presented there, and pretty steady rate of increase in the property taxes. The intergovernmental revenues, the second section there, tends to be pretty consistent from one year to the next, not too much variation. And that's true for virtually each of the others, the other revenue sources and fees and charges. And then on the far end, we still got the Hurricane Irene, because way back when, that was kind of a big piece of the revenues and expenditures. Now it's, last couple of years, there's been virtually no spending, or no revenue there, no spending there. Looking at the general fund expenditures, highways and roads, the largest piece, and public safety coming in next at three million seven. One thing to point out on the highways and roads at six million four, because these are governmental fund statements, we retired two-point-two million in debt and then took on another within the highway fund, and then took on another three million debt, so that inflates this figure. So the regular ongoing highway and roads expenditures were more like four-point-two million, which is kind of consistent with how they showed up on the government-wide statements. And again, looking at trends in the expenditures, again, general government, following pretty much the property tax kind of trend. Public safety is, tends to be, has been a little more level, a little spike this year. Public works very, a smaller piece and also very level, same with health and welfare. Recreation has tended to go up and down a bit, debt's fairly consistent. And then this year, again, the highways and roads would have been following that same kind of trend, were it not for the two-point-two million of reduction on the debt. And then other has tended to be a little more fluctuation than, or not as steady in its, in its trends. And the last, so that's really the last slides on the numbers. The only other one is we have certain required communications to those charged with governance, that's you folks. And basically just letting you know that if we'd had any issues with the town, we would identify them here. Just again, letting you know that management's responsible for the financial statements. All significant transactions have been recorded. And we did not encounter any difficulties in performing the audit in terms of cooperation from management or staff. As far as corrected and uncorrected misstatements, any misstatements, any adjustments that we proposed were accepted by management, and none of them were material to the financial statements, other than things that the town expected us to make adjustments for. We had no disagreements with management, and we're also required to let you know if we had any reason to believe management was kind of shopping for an opinion on how to treat a transaction, and we're not aware of any of those kind of communications. And so that is an attempt to try to squeeze this all down into a shorter agenda piece.
A couple of questions that will go through the board, see if they have any. I always ask the question, are there any areas that we can improve as a community on sharing either information to you or what we should be looking for?
In terms of-
Relative to the way we prepare our budgets and/or-
No, I think, you know, from our perspective, we've had no issues with the, you know, we don't have any management letter comments in terms of internal control deficiencies. We also really completed all of the, this is a single audit year for the town as well. That work is all completed save for getting the final schedule of financial assistance ironed out. But we had no compliance findings in the single audit work and no internal control findings there either, so-
And you had cooperation from the management?
Absolutely, yeah, and, you know, I think, and the finance director deserves some credit, she's, you know, I think every year she's doing a better and better job, which makes the audit easier as well, so.
I've noticed over the years, it's always been like an interesting number, the reappraisal number, the three, seven hundred and thirty-five, and I was trying to, early on, say to Stuart, "Couldn't we just take this and put it towards a more bike paths?" And he reminded me that this is a statutory responsibility that we maintain. Is there any flexibility as far as continuing to add to the, to that line, or, so that we, are we investing, or is this just a restricted fund? What's the benefit of?
Now, from the different restrictions on the fund balance? Those are either generated by money that we're getting from outside of the town, from a state interest. Sometimes, some of them are donations from individuals that are set aside for a specific purpose, and some are what the voters have voted on over the, you know, shall we put aside so much for reappraisal? Once that's, that's voted by the voters, it has to be used for that purpose.
The reappraisal money's come to us from, from the state, state law-
State law provides that the state shell allocate so many dollars per parcel to each community for essentially, for a future reappraisal should one be required. The longer we stay in compliance with the law, with the certified local, whatever they call them, CLA, the less, the more money we have set aside for reappraisal, the less likely we are to spend it. And we have, in fact, approached the state about using some of those reappraisal monies to upgrade some of the activities in the listers and assessors office, and we were told that that is not permitted, it has to go specifically to a reappraisal. Many of the other reserves are established by the voters. You note in our warning, we lay out the monies that are being set aside in reserves, and the voters are approving them. If, in fact, you wanted to take some of those funds and redirect them, you would have to go back to the voters, either at a special or an annual meeting, and ask them to redirect those funds elsewhere. And we did that in one case, a select board, we had, I think, 50,000 set aside for a skate park, and the board went back several years later and asked the board, the folks, asked the voters, to release those funds so that we could use them to offset an increase in the tax rate, and the voters approved that. So you were able to take those funds and reallocate them to help balance the tax rate increase that we were facing.
On that same page, the difference between Pathway Project and Ninja Pathway?
The Pathway Project itself is the, is actually the original grant, which has now become the Ninja Pathway. We received a grant from the state which required a local share of 110,000, I believe, that has remained constant and has been there for years while we try to finish the design of the particular pathway. And the additional funds are other pathway projects for which we have received federal grants. I know it's listed as the Ninja Pathway, but I think it's a combination of various pathway projects for which we have grants or monies set aside as the local share.
Can you speak to the $1,000 for health and welfare?
I'm afraid not off the top of my head.
Okay.
I'm not sure of the category.
Or the 4,000 for public safety? I mean, some of these are just historical...
Well, the public safety is more likely drug funds that have come to us, thanks to our efforts in assisting either the state or the federal government. Those funds come to us, and previous boards have said if they come in, we should set them aside for future expenses. There are some relatively small reserves where the monies are dedicated for a specific instance, and unfortunately, unless the voters approve otherwise, or unless the donor approves otherwise, we can't use them elsewhere. The health and welfare, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just wondering if that's money that could be spent on health and welfare in some other context? It would be nice to know what the restrictions are on, particularly these small pots of money that probably aren't funding anything.
We can do that.
Anything.
Yeah, we can put that together for you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question on the same line? On the same line, Stuart, and I'm not sure if this, but on page 30 where this, where all these funds are listed, it looks like there's a 65,000 committed for Irene, but it doesn't carry over into the totals? Is that because it's...
Are you looking at the financial statements now?
The notes to financial statements on page 30? Because it's on it. Is that...
In this.
That's 65,000 for Irene, and I'll let Steve confirm this, but that may be monies that we are paying on the debt that we accumulated, and I'm speaking off the top of my head.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that is what that is, Stu, but that is a typo for that not carrying over to the right on that total column. But that's committed money, so that's not reserved, so that typically, if it's labeled as committed, that means it's something the select board set aside at some point.
Pay the bond, isn't it? It's the bond. Isn't that the bond?
It is. I mean, I know we are paying down on the debt, the 1.3 million that FEMA did not approve, that we fought very hard along with the state to try to get approved, and we are paying that down on an annual basis. So that when you look at the budget, the only monies that are going towards Irene are those that are paying off that indebtedness.
Okay, I'll follow you afterwards a minute.
Yeah, fine.
Fire equipment, is that for all of fire equipment that...
Yeah, that's the combination, that is the reserve we set up annually, it's a combination of trucks and vehicles, as well as the radios that we started about five years ago, Paul and the chief of police, and we made a presentation about using some of those funds for the radio console that is coming into this facility this year, so that, those funds will be depleted somewhat when that project is finished. But we generally set aside anywhere from 40,000 to 60,000 a year for equipment and reserve.
One more question, I think you skipped over page eight, I'm not sure if we started on page 11, but I am interested in, and we talked about this last year a little bit, the debt to net assets ratio?
Mm-hmm.
And how we're doing on that as a bellwether for how we're doing in terms of the amount of debt we're carrying versus the, versus the total assets that we have.
Yeah, let me go back to that slide, just to keep this...
Page eight in your presentation.
Yeah. So the liabilities as a percentage of net position?
Yeah, I think you call it in your report, debt to net assets ratio, I think.
Yeah, which would be the liabilities as a percentage of net position. So that's really just a function of what is your total debt versus what you have in equity.
Mm-hmm.
So you're, you know, if you look at the town, you're at about 80%, now Manchester is, and this is governmental side too, this is kind of the slide if we compare between what's government and what's in the proprietary fund. So this is just the general fund debt, not general fund, but other than water and sewer, so the, all of the governmental funds, and this is, I think, probably the one where I was saying, if you say, well, Manchester looks pretty low compared to you guys at 18%, and that's on the governmental side, but when you look to page 12, and the liabilities as a percentage of net position, in that one, you see Manchester hopping up to 108%. So, and that's on the proprietary funds there, so it's a matter of where their assets and their debt is, so, and actually, Bennington is really consistent on the liabilities as a percentage of total assets from both the proprietary fund and the government fund.
Let's just about exactly the number it was last year, as I remember, so is that a sign of health in terms of holding steady at that 80% number? Is that a, is that high? Is that where we should be? Should we be making it a community goal to get that lower?
I'd see, you know, looking at, it's consistent with your peers, and I think you're fine where you're at.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Can I ask one question, Tom, just to clarify? Steve, we, once again, we had an increase, I think smaller this year than other years, in the fund balance itself.
Correct.
And I don't remember what the number was, but in the range of 80,000 or something like that. And that has been a trend that has continued. We keep adding to our fund balance, which is also a, in a sense, a bellwether of our relative health financially, and I don't, I don't remember what the number was, but...
Yeah, no, that's, well, and one thing I, this year was just trying to get this done in a pretty quick time, so I used pretty much the same slides, but that would be an interesting slide next year to track that fund balance. So in other words, we did trends on revenue, trends on expenditures, but we could certainly do a trend, looking at trends on both fund balance, both in proprietary and...
It'd be great to do that, at least for five years, if possible, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Because it shows trends also, you know, if there's best practice or comparables against other towns or municipalities, it'd be nice to have. I know that you started the, Steve, comparing with Fronterboro and Manchester, it's really helpful to see that. I think even if we can develop that more, just to find out where we really stand. I don't, we have to have a motion to accept the audit, don't we, Stu? Do we have to make a motion?
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah. But there was a question, did you have, do you have a question that maybe the auditor...
What does general fund mean?
The general, it is Steve Cannute, I can do that one. The general fund is all of the administrative funds, it does include the police, recreation, and then the rest is all the administrative offices, the manager's office, the lister's office, the town clerk, permitting and planning, senior citizens, recreation, and then police. That's the generally, the general fund.
I just have a quick statement and a question. Seems like now would be a great time to start the discussion on the penny tax. Manchester does it, they get 700,000, it goes into their general fund, and they have the 12th or 13th lowest property tax in Vermont. That being said, can you explain for the folks at home in sort of ABC language, property taxes have gone up, 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 up? What causes that?
It's pretty much, if you look at the expenditure, the tracking expenditures for both general government and highway, it's, they almost, I would say the trend, if you looked at those two graphs, they're right in sync, so...
Are we, is the town bringing in enough money, or is it bringing in less money the last five, six, 10 years?
In terms of...
Revenues to keep up?
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're consistent with the expenditures, and the expenditures are what's driving the property taxes, so...
And from my perspective, Joey, I think that our other income has been relatively consistent over the years. The unfortunate part is, is that costs continue to rise, and so even though I think we strive to level fund at least the tax rate, so that the growth in the amount of expenditures tracks the grand list, we don't always succeed, so you'll see an increase in the taxes raised, which may result in an increase in the tax rate. But traditionally, other revenues remain about the same. It's hard to go out and find other funds. Your comment about the local option tax is valid. We now, once the legislature approves, the charter amendments that were adopted last year, and they are in the legislature now, once those are approved, we would be able to put before the voters that particular question. We can't at the present time.
All right. It won't solve all the problems, but again, Manchester has the 12th or 13th lowest property tax because of the penny tax, so it'd be nice to start that conversation, whether it's this board or the new board.
Yeah, no, we didn't have that option before we had the charter review and the vote, so now, as you said, if the legislature does grant us the charter amendment...
Just to let you folks know, the paperwork is there, ready to be co-sponsored and sponsored, and I believe that'll be done in the next several days.
And that'll open a real good discussion on that, because that's sort of been something that I've been...
Almost a million bucks a year, and we could pay for a fire truck instead of bonding a fire truck.
Let's not talk about that tonight, okay? Jim's already got the money spent. I got another idea, but anyway.
You're not on the board anymore.
We have a motion to accept the audit report, motion to accept the audit.
Second.
I'll, excuse me, a discussion, further discussion on it. Hearing not all signify in favor or by aye?
Aye.
That's seven in favor, and there is no objection. Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next year, I will have no technical difficulties, I doubt it. It seems unlikely.
Now, we have another subject to discuss with Dan. Basically, the TIF annual certification. I expect this should be brief, because there's, other than having an approved TIF district, we have not sought any activity within it. Maybe, Dan, you could just tell us why we're doing this exercise and what we might expect in the future?
Sure, so I'm here, the request that I'm making tonight per statute is that the select board certify the TIF Tax Improvement Financing District annual report, it's required, this report's required to be filed every year with the state, and the select board is required every year to certify the report. The main thing that the state would, wants this select board to certify is the taxable values as of April 1 versus the original taxable value that was certified by the state back in 2017. This report only covers a period from July 1, 2017, to June 30, 2018, so we were approved in October of 2017, so it's not a big time period, and because of that, the taxable values have not changed relative to the original taxable value, so that's not really, isn't really much to talk about there. The rest of the report, the balance of the report would normally show progress on different projects, as well as our bonding, but as, since we have not begun any bond, we have not incurred any debt, and we haven't begun any projects as of yet, there's really not much to report in there. So there will be a lot more to report, presumably, and hopefully, next year, but this year is pretty perfunctory, and I would just ask that the board, if you have any questions, certainly ask them, but if not, I would just ask that you certify the annual report so we can send it up to the state and comply with our obligations this year with regard to the TIF district.
It's on a statutory, excuse me, the form prescribed by the state, isn't it?
Yes, I didn't come up with this form.
Yeah, I would hope not.
But it is, it is a form created by Vermont Economic Progress Council to help keep us on track, so that we'll be ready for the audit by the state auditor's office, it comes around every five years, I understand it's fairly painful, and this is a way to try to make it a little less painful, so...
Okay. I guess you just need to have that circulated for our signatures?
Actually, all I need is a motion to approve the TIF annual report, and that's the record will show that.
We've had that circulated to us and had the opportunity to review it. As Dan said, it looks pretty perfunctory at this point, and hopefully, will be much more interesting in years to come, but I need a motion to accept it.
Can you explain the number of jobs that were created or lost in this report? I think it's on one of the major listings, what the net total was.
Yeah, basically, I think Dan can speak to that, but it was like...
Sure, I can speak to that, so the net, there was, in the, within the TIF district, based on our, the best numbers we can get, there was a net loss of 18.
We're hoping that that will be...
I hope when we start investing in our downtown, that those, that will change.
Well, what accounts for those 18?
Well, there was Friendly's.
Okay.
So that's probably 10 jobs right there. Other than that, I don't, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Well, Leflam's closed.
Leflam's, yeah.
Yeah, two restaurants, these restaurants, they were way to the white, numerous people, two of those, both Friendly's and Bennington Station.
Yes, that was the other one.
Everything else is up and down, two or four, but those two, because you had one place only had three employees, like both Friendly's and Bennington Station were numerous. Same effect, that way, three or four, it's a guy.
Thanks, John, thank you. Have a motion?
Motion to approve this.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion on it?
Just a quick question, are these, Dan, do these numbers get checked by the assessors every year, or...
Yeah, the assessor actually has to certify this before it comes to you guys, so...
Okay, so it's on John?
Yes.
Okay.
This was an easy one, because it's the same number as approved originally. Next year will have to be, it'll take much more effort.
All in favor of making that certification as required, signify by aye?
Aye.
That's seven in favor and no opposition to it. Thank you, Dan. The next item you might stay for, the discussion relative to the Depot Street Garage.
I'm going to go ahead and invite Jason Marcy up here with me. I'll kick off the conversation, but Jason is here to represent the folks making the proposal this evening that we're asking you to authorize us to accept and negotiate a purchase and sale regarding, just a little bit back on, we are here this evening to recommend to the select board that they accept a proposal for the Depot, former Depot Street Highway Garage. This is one of three proposals, however, one of them was deemed unresponsive and, or non-responsive, and one of the proposals has been withdrawn, so this is the only proposal before the board. The good thing is this is, we felt that this was the best proposal out of the three anyways, so we feel really, really good about this proposal. I'm going to let Jason do kind of a rundown for more deep... I'm going to let Jason do kind of a rundown in more detail, but it is a proposal from SC Spirits LLC to convert the property into a craft distillery and tasting room. It involves many, many thousands of dollars, I'll let Jason perhaps chat about that, of investment, so, and it also involves a very aggressive timeline for developing and renovating the property. So, our formal, staff's formal recommendation is that the select board authorize town staff and town council to negotiate and execute a purchase and sale agreement with SC Spirits. We believe the short timeline for completion of the project, the high-level investment, and the firm financial commitment make the SC Spirits proposal compelling. And, like I said, Jason Morrissey is here representing the folks, SC Spirits, who are making that proposal, and I know I have some brief remarks for you folks this evening.
Great. Hi, Jason, welcome.
Good evening. Thanks, Dan. As Dan said, SC Spirits was invited to be here tonight to discuss briefly at a very high level what the concept they have. You've seen that before, you, the reason I'm here tonight representing my clients is there are two principles behind the LLC that has the proposal that is before the board. They're both private individuals. There is an employment issue with one of them, so before this gets out, they're choosing to remain private, and I hope the board will respect that. I believe those identities may be known to you, they may not be, but please, for any questions or discussion you have tonight, please leave individual names out of it.
That's helpful, and just remind the board to make sure that we maintain that in a sense of confidentiality, but I think before you start, these folks, based on the statements already, they have a local connection, it's not someone coming from Wisconsin.
It's two individuals with very several generational connections to Bennington. They are, they are not fast buck artists that are flashing through town.
We haven't seen any of those.
No, no.
Okay.
Anyway, the brief comments are this, you know, the goal of us being here tonight is to seek permission from the board to give us a period of three weeks to 30 days to hammer off the details of a purchase and sale agreement for the Depot Street Garage to be purchased by SC Spirits LLC, or an entity to be created by SC Spirits LLC from the town of Bennington. We also obviously seek your acceptance of the proposal, which I'm not sure if you still officially need to do or not tonight. Going through my notes, some of the points have already been hit. Both of the principles are Bennington natives, multi-generational families within the town. The intent on the property is to fully restore the building, it's a $1 million budget, it's a $700,000 renovation. The purpose, as one of the principles explained to me, that was an international harvester dealership 70 years ago, and to bring it back to what he would call a post-World War II luster. Have a fairly industrial building in the downtown area that would be used for a distillery. They're going to distill spirits there, and the remainder of the $1 million investment, $700,000 for construction, would be for the purchase of equipment. Dan is correct, it's an aggressive timeline, the financing is in place, which is unusual to have the financing in place that quickly, but the financing is there, and they're, they would like to be fully renovated by summertime and operating shortly thereafter.
2019?
2019, and the business plan shows profit by 2020. The goal is to have full employment by 2022. The concept is to have both a tasting room area and some limited food service and a bar service area in addition to the whiskeys and other spirits that they would produce. There would also be a, I think most people, I'm sure here tonight and on TV, have been in renovated older buildings where you've got a very nice ambiance and decor of a renovated industrial building, that's the goal. The proposal, I've got some, let me jump to that right now and just read from what you've already seen, but the renovation would be to remove and replace the current roof with a standing scene roof, remove the stucco and paint blocks, finish with either metal or concrete siding, remove and replace the insulated windows consistent with an existing style to match the look elsewhere on the block, replace the overhead doors with modern insulated glass doors to match other windows that would go in, remove the drop ceilings so that you would see the hardware and trusses throughout the building, obviously, update the ventilation, the lighting. There's some other water infrastructure work for the business of distilling that needs to be done, which will require some work connecting to the, Stu, you would probably know this, I think the main is actually on Depot Street in front of the garage.
That is correct.
There's going to be some enhancement done there because of the amount of water needed for the distilling operation.
Correct.
So, it's, it's a, to be candid, it's a concept that I was very impressed with when I read it, because, you know, it's the renovation of an old building, it's something that we don't have yet in downtown Bennington, it complements a lot of other businesses down there, and, and these are folks that have the wherewithal to pull it off. More importantly than that, they certainly have demonstrated to me the desire to pull it off. So, basically, the benefits to the town would be an attraction that we don't have right now, it's a million-dollar investment, it's a nice building that would go on the tax rolls, it's obviously currently not on the tax rolls, certainly adds to the tourism concept we look for all of the time. I can't answer any other questions, but as I said, we just seek your approval in a 21 to 30-day window to negotiate the fine points of purchase and sale agreement.
Got a quick question. Mr. Morrissey, is there a name that they've decided on for the business?
Not yet.
Parking, is that pretty much that we have...
Parking is one of the details. I'm not intimately familiar with the process that SC Spirits or any of the other candidates had to go through. I've seen the questionnaire. One of the things I do believe the town's going to have to go through as a condition to make any deal happen would be to subdivide that building and some limited parking off of the larger parcel, which consists of...
The parking lot.
Most of the downtown parking in the area kind of between Tony Napolitano's shop and the Eagles and the Citizens Bank and all that sort of stuff, so. Parking is part of the plan, but as you might expect for anybody developing that building, assuming the town is willing to retain parking in that area, which I think is a relatively safe bet, looking towards the future of Bennington and what's necessary downtown, the public parking is really, is immediately adjacent to whatever the town did agree to subdivide off for this proposed development.
Just two questions before I turn it over. The water consumption for this type of activity, is that something that we would be able to provide, and is this a metered system?
Certainly. If you recall, we have capacity to supply something in the range of 6 million gallons of water a day. We're currently using something in the range of 2.1 or 2.2, so we have plenty of capacity. I think there are some engineering and logistic issues with bringing water off of Depot Street, which is a smaller main than we'd normally expect, but that has to be resolved through engineering, and that's something that has to be worked out. But we certainly have the capacity in the town system to supply them with all the water they need.
Great. The number of employees anticipated, Jason, is there any idea at this point?
The hope is to have six full-time, it'll be one full-time employee immediately upon approval of the project. That will ramp up to six for the distilling operation over the first 30 months. The, I hate to use the term, but the wild card in that question, Tom, is to the extent how the food service side gets developed. Obviously, if that gets, and that is sort of a wait-and-see part, but the distillery is the main part of it, shouldn't be surprising to hear there would be some level of food service attached to it, and depending how that gets developed, that, that's a variable now, but six full-time in the manufacturing side of the distillery.
Great. John?
Tom took all the good questions, so...
Yeah, I know.
I'm very excited for this project. It's not often that someone comes in, wants to spend a million dollars downtown and getting this property back on the tax roll, or on the tax roll, I'm excited for, and I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of questions. So, the state building, which houses both Community College in Vermont, I worked for Community College, and the health department has a smaller lot on the side, but generally students and staff park out back in the municipal lot. So, it is also the, in case of an evacuation or a fire, the safety area for all the employees and students and, and clients of the health department is right beside that building. So, I think we would just want to make sure that there's nothing placed on the parking lot side that would, that might make that not a safe, like, you know, a safety area for students and staff.
I think, I know, just looking at the proposal, there's no expansion to the building. The building envelope today is what the building envelope will be after redevelopment. It might be a question of landscaping around it, but there, I don't think, there shouldn't be any grander expansion of the building footprint, and any, any expansion would be so minor, Gene, as to...
Okay.
It would be a difference without a distinction, I think.
Okay, all right. Well, it sounds like a fantastic project, I just want to make sure we don't undo something else. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for bringing this. It's great to have this in front of us, and it is a significant investment, as Chad mentions. One of the things that means a lot to me is that if this project, for some reason or another, doesn't make it, is that the town has an opportunity to try to exercise a right of first refusal on the property, if possible. So, I don't know if that's, if that's been part of the negotiation, but it does feel to me that...
Well, if I can just address that question first, there has been no negotiation yet because we don't have the right to negotiate yet, so...
Yep.
You know, that's, that's what we're asking for tonight, is some time to work through those details.
Great. Well, maybe I'd just say to the town staff, and you know, it feels to me like during this negotiation, a really important design principle would be that if, for some reason, this goes down, that we have at least an opportunity to have a transferable right of first refusal that could benefit the redevelopment partners or any of our big downtown efforts. Doesn't mean, doesn't, wouldn't be an obligation for us to exercise that right of first refusal, but it would be an opportunity, it would give us a seat at the table if things go belly up with that operation, and, and there was a really important use for it, such as vertical parking or something else that we really needed downtown.
Seth?
Yes, thank you.
I'm good, glad to see you coming to town. Recused?
Yeah, thank you for your clarity on this. We kind of jumped right into, I will be recusing when this comes to vote, you know, a couple minutes here.
Thanks.
I think it's great. I've always thought that building was a diamond in the rough, so that's going to be really fun to watch it shine again. I just think it's something unique, it's something new, I think it's going to generate a lot of excitement downtown, so I see no downside.
The, there's no downside, it's all upside. Got it, just I think here of the presentation tonight from Jason relative to the interest in moving quickly, making the investment quickly. I think that's what was going to, is motivating the board, is that it's a substantial investment quickly. It's not something we have to wait around for a couple of years to see if it regulates.
Or longer.
That's, you know, we've been there again and done that, so that part of the discussion relative to negotiating the terms and conditions, I'm sure will be part of that discussion. And I hear you tonight, Jason, is saying that's our goal too, so I think we're on the common.
Well, you know, the key part of that, as I know you're well aware, the financing's in hand.
Yep.
That clears a lot of hurdles, and...
Yep.
My information is that the financing is in hand, it's largely privately financed, and that, that allows SC Spirits to accelerate their development of, of the project, and move quickly upon acquisition of it.
What will you need from us, Stu and Dan, tonight relative to...
I've got a question, sir.
Just, before I get to Joey.
Just authorization for the staff and council, town council, to negotiate with Jason and his client to a purchase and sale agreement, and, you know, I appreciate, they want to move quickly, we'd like to move quickly too, and they're saying up to 30 days, but I think given the desire to move quickly that we've got that done.
I think that's an outside number.
Yeah, we'll get them more quickly.
Joey, do you have a question?
Do you want to sit here and down?
Oh, sure.
So, I will try to give away the name, I think, we were all hoping to have this information in the packet today, or on Friday. There's a bit of contention here that the group is reaching for a third property, almost three years after having a second property that has been promised to be open on Main Street, and it's still not open. It seems like protection open, and it's not good for the street.
Can interrupt you before you get too far down that wrong road. This is not the group.
No?
No.
Okay, well then...
Yep.
Am I still correct in all this?
Yeah, no, I have a same rest of this, and frankly, this is a totally different group.
Okay.
Yep.
I apologize, then.
Okay, thanks, Joey.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jason? Well, actually, we'll, I'll have a motion to authorize...
Should I just walk in?
Yeah, please, you had to go up there and identify yourself.
That will be part of the contract.
Welcome to Charlie and the Panacation, and serve on the Bennington Downtown Alliance Board. First of all, I want to thank the select board for the patience that you've exercised in this process. When it was first thought that there was an alternative to awarding a building for a very low return use, or demolishing the building to create a few parking spaces, the board bought into that process and then lived with the process as it went through a couple of steps to seek an exciting proposal. And it was the board's patience that allowed that process to come to fruition, as it has. And one additional piece that I'd like to add, and this was part of the original proposal that was given to the board regarding the Depot Street Garage, it's exciting that, if you will recall, the BDI had produced, at no cost, an architectural rendition of the potential that existed within the building, seeing it transformed from a garage filled with tow trucks and grease and dirt and all of those kinds of things, which, by the way, was replaced by a very excellent facility that the town is now utilizing, but to see it transformed into, quite frankly, something that is very internal to the proposal that Jason has made this evening, in terms of the architectural treatment of the building. So, I can't speak for all of downtown, but for me personally, it's very exciting that we have this on the table. I certainly hope that everyone can, can continue moving forward and make it happen, but I share the excitement that the board has expressed this evening, that Bennington's going to come out a win-win on this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion?
A motion to authorize negotiations on a purchase and sale agreement.
Second.
To be completed within what timeframe?
No more than 30 days, is that okay?
No more than 30 days.
Okay. Thirty days?
Yeah, 30 days, then we'll come back for our review.
Yeah, good. Further discussion, seeing Carson has recused from discussion? Any questions? More?
Yeah, I have a quick question.
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Any questions about annual water usage for the distillery?
I don't have that information.
And follow-up, could it be possible to use water spray for the distillery?
Well, that's beyond the scope, I, while I'm sure I'll enjoy the product made, I won't be the one making it. And in terms of what the volume is, that, of course, is dependent on product demand, how much is being demanded, how much is being sold, and how it's supplied, I can say that the supply plan... I can say that the supply plan shared with me, which I asked for some clarification for from, from Stu, was one piece of infrastructure that will be necessary, there will have to be, I think it's actually, it's not the main depot that's been discussed as being expanded, it's the connection into the building that will need to be expanded.
For service line.
The service line will need to be expanded, not the main, because of the amount...
It's made more problematic, Jason, because the main depot street is smaller than a normal eight-inch water.
So, you know, that, that needs to be covered, but I don't, you know, the supply would come from town water.
Distillery and spring water sort of together for sales.
Well, you know, that's beyond anything I can, I can really speak to tonight.
Any other citizens have a question before the board moves on? I think you've heard the flavor of the discussion. I'll signify by aye to the motion that's on the floor. Anyone opposed? No, we have six in favor and one abstention. Thank you very much, and look forward to moving this exciting project forward. The next item on our agenda is some training discussion relative to implicit bias. I can indicate, and I'm going to probably turn it over to Donald here, but there's been a training schedule for this matter already.
That is correct. And Donald's statement last week, and I think it also appeared in the banner as an op-ed piece, one of the first steps was to seek implicit bias training for all municipal staff. We have scheduled that for April 30th. There will be two sessions. All, all town employees will receive training. The rescue squad is asked to be a part of it, and so we have made arrangements to accommodate their staff, and there, there may be others who wish to join, and we'll try to figure that out. It'll help reduce the cost for us, obviously, but it'll be held in this, this particular facility. Two sessions, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, and we should be able to accommodate all of our employees. We've actually implemented a no-time-off for that particular day, so employees will, will not be able to get time off during that time unless, for whatever reason, they're out sick or something like that.
Is there another day, too, the following day?
No, the following day is, is a, is a training that we were arranging for our supervisors, both in the public works and police, doing, dealing with employee reactions, hostile work environment, those kinds of things, and that is really closed to the town staff.
Right. And that's going to be presented by an experienced practitioner?
Yes. The individual that we will be contracting with is Karen Stackpole. She's an employee, employment lawyer in Burlington, and I've, I've been at one of her sessions, and she is a tremendously dynamic individual.
And maybe the genesis for this discussion, Donald, would you like to just join in? Because one of the, and I was away for that meeting, but this was one of the important discussion, or topics of the discussion on the, the 28th, and this is, I think, a first response, if not the only response that the town's making.
Yeah, and we didn't, we weren't able to have a discussion at the time. It was something that I had read into other business because we didn't have it as an agenda item, but it, I know it's something that this whole board cares about very deeply, and, excuse me, the, the whole issue of implicit bias training is not something that just Bennington is taking on. I think we know this. Jim, you're probably having it up at the legislature, and many, many towns are taking it on, and institutions, my employer is taking it on, and a lot of different, a lot of different people have gotten a lot out of it. So, it's really, it's not a one-time fix, it's not something that you do once and then you are fixed. It's something that is a lifelong process, that helps everybody think a little bit differently about how the world's put together, and which, which biases we carry with us from our own personal experiences, and how we can get by them a little bit, and make our community as welcoming and open as it can possibly be. So, I think it's really important for us to start, as I mentioned in my op-ed piece, leading by example, and making sure that our town staff is really tuned up on this, and I, I think the select board should try to attend, too, if we're welcome. I think it would be great for us...
We're counting on you being...
For as many of us as possible to be there for that, I think.
It's a scheduled date?
April 30th.
30th. What's, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, so...
I believe it's a Monday, but I, it may end up being a Tuesday. We had trouble finding appropriate days where...
You going to televise it?
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
Good question.
Are you going to televise it?
No.
Why not?
Well, I hadn't really written...
These things are a little bit more...
It's strange for our employees, it's, it's, it's really meant, I think, to get to those folks who, who can use the training and will appreciate the training.
I think you'd do a great service to the town.
Well, I think this is more of a...
Just my two cents.
Yeah, but you're going to have to have an in-house discussion, and I don't think putting it on TV is going to make any benefit to anyone either participating here or seeing it on the TV. It's really much more personal dialogue, albeit this, you're probably going to have a number of folks here, that, I think the dynamics are so important that it's got to be in an environment that offers that exchange.
It's generally not a spectator sport. It's generally something that you, you get involved and you talk to people as you, as you go along, so I think it would, I think it influences, great, Jim, you have to show people, but in this particular situation, I can imagine that the training will be more likely broken into small groups, or will involve other things that wouldn't lend itself as well to TV.
I'm wondering, though, because I will also be away then, and I would like to attend this training, I'm wondering if this trainer might have other towns or other settings that, dates that we could know about, so that if we can't attend in Bennington, we could attend elsewhere.
I can ask.
Thank you.
Still, I would like to, you know, we hadn't made a decision as a board, but I would like to compliment you on getting a bit in your teeth and working on this very quickly and efficiently, and finding some really good resources for us to work with. It's something that I had hoped wouldn't have to drag on, and it is clear that it's, you've made it a priority for your staff, too, and I really appreciate the fact that you, that you've decided to do that.
And just for Jim's, Jim's comment, I, I think I will talk with, with Karen to see whether or not, if we were to tape it, whether or not it could be used as a, as a learning tool for others, based on that conversation, but I'll rely on, on her to direct me in that regard, just because of some of the things that she may attempt to drag out of our employees that perhaps wouldn't have, people want to televise, but we'll see. I'll talk with her.
I think some depend, I think people do it differently. Sometimes it can be a fairly personal experience.
The fact that the select board is going to be possibly somewhat reconstituted, it would be great if there was, if this was back up as a topic for whoever is sitting around this table in April.
Well, it is a subject that lends itself to ongoing learning, sort of lifelong learning, and again, not just doing it once and, and being fixed, but continuing to always strive to do things a little bit better, as we do here in town, so hopefully we'll have other opportunities.
Okay, that's the plan going forward, subject to addition in other matters, but that's...
Yeah, I don't think you need to vote on it, do you?
Nope, nope, it's just, I think Gene's suggestion is good, maybe even have a pre-training session dialogue at this board level, so that there'll be some...
And a reminder that we can go, whoever's on the select board.
Yeah.
Even if you're not, we'll, we'll extend an invitation to all of you who sit here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Liquor licenses, Stu?
Yes, I have three first class and eight second-class licenses. They're all renewals, so I'll circulate that for your signature.
While we're doing that, could you give us a manager's report?
I can begin that. We have a one-action item, which is the, it's a certificate of no appeal or suit, suit pending. This is a, an assessors, listers requirement on an annual basis, and this relates to the April 1st, 2018 grant list. There are no appeals or suits pending. This would require the board's signature. Unfortunately, the form the state provides only has five lines, so if you don't mind squeezing in your names, that would be great.
Up here, next to these guys?
These, right here, on that side. In other action information, as I noted in my report, we are now contracting with Cat TV to provide the select board and development review board meetings. Apparently Comcast has changed the way it calculates its income, which has provided for a reduction in, in Cat TV peg access fees, and has forced Cat TV to approach all of the municipalities that it now televises to see if we would contract with them. We have done so, an annual cost of $3,600, which we are splitting between the select board and development review board, review board, excuse me, and our contract took effect January 1, so we'll bid about an $1,800 hit this year, an $1,800 hit the next fiscal year. It's not going to certainly break the bank, but we certainly appreciate the Cat TV presence and the opportunity for everyone outside of this meeting room to be able to view these meetings, should they have access to Cat TV.
I think you can thank your friendly FCC folks for assisting Comcast and other extortionary providers of services.
Tell us how you feel.
That we, this is a unfortunate recourse, but to ensure the public of access, this is a needed step, and I appreciate the management for taking it.
We do need this.
Yep.
And I'm glad I didn't hold back. Thanks.
Glad to have it, yeah.
And that's all I have tonight. We, I did say at the bottom here, and there may be the question out in the community, the community development director search has ceased. We have in excess of 35 applications, many coming from our use of Indeed, quite a variety of applications, many not really in the community development field, but we have narrowed our search down to, I think it's eight or nine individuals, and we'll be doing a staff interview process. We're just now going through those applications, trying to rate them and to see which ones we really do want to interview. It's a pretty varied collection of people, but I think we have some really good candidates in that group.
Any locals?
Most of the ones that we are looking to interview are locals. There are a couple from outside the area.
And I think Stu's going to invite Donald to the discussion, once you get it down to a reasonable number, so that at least the board will be involved in the knowledge base, because this board has reconstituted, will be working closely with that individual come April.
Can I ask a question about one of the items?
Yes.
And you might not know the answer. For the folks in Phase 2 of the PFOA water hookups, is there an appeal process at all that residents who are not going to be hooked up to town water can go through to hopefully become connected, or is it a final?
The decisions that are made to connect or not are engineered decisions that are being made. The goal would be to hook up everyone to municipal water.
Right.
There are some folks that are so far outside the system that you can't bring municipal water to them safely, because they don't have, they don't use enough water to generate sufficient flow, so that the, the line will stay properly chlorinated, and you'll end up with bacteria and things developing in the system, so it's unhealthy.
Yeah.
And those are the folks that, that either they will be getting a newly drilled well, or they will be offered the opportunity for a...
To keep their poet...
Long-term poet system. But I think those folks on this side of town are relatively few and far between, but there are...
The area I'm asking about is the Settlers Road area.
Settlers Road, I'm not sure is going to be served...
Right.
...by, by this process, and that is, that's a decision that we will talk with the state about. They're, they're looking at the number of people who may have issues on Settlers Road, Rice Lane, as being not sufficient to, to extend the, the line to on a cost-benefit analysis, unfortunately.
Okay.
Okay, I'll sub.
Yes, thank you.
Any further questions of Stu this evening on his report? Okay, other business?
I just want to make one comment. Last meeting, after Donald read his statement, I was under the impression that he did not want us to make comments, and I was the first person who was asked, and I said nothing in support of what Donald said, and I in no way want the public to think that I didn't agree with what Donald said, and I was feeling very badly that I hadn't said anything, so I just want to set the record straight. I support every word that Donald said. Thank you.
What did you want to say, though? I'm dying to know.
I just wanted to tell everyone that I thought it was a wonderful thing, and I aspire to be everything that his statement expressed, and my hopes and dreams for Bennington were stated beautifully in what he said. So, I misunderstood, I thought I wasn't supposed to say anything, so I didn't.
I did try to discourage further discussion on it, since it was a...
Didn't work.
I was being a good girl.
You were the only one that followed the rules, right.
And then everybody said lovely things, and I had said nothing, and I felt like a complete idiot, so...
So, no...
Thank you, Jim.
Of course.
No comments?
Good.
Nothing this week.
That's good.
So shiny annual report, Stuart. This is kind of nice.
Yes, yes.
Don't suppose anybody could get a copy of this if they wanted it?
We do have some hard copies at, at the office. It'll also ultimately, I believe, be on, on, on the website. You will note that the photograph was provided by Lynn Green.
Yeah, that's great.
Very festive.
It really is a nice photograph. The report does include the reports of all departments, and it does include the audit, which you also have a copy of. And interestingly enough, state law requires that we only publish the audit, so we go slightly above and beyond with all of the reports of the departments and the comparison of statistics and other information in that report.
I hope people will read it and the summaries of activities and, and see all of the wonderful things that have been accomplished this year.
Yeah, one of the things that, before we leave that subject, you know, last town meeting, we had a real excellent presentation from Zirwan, and I know she's moving on, but I'm wondering if we could engage her, maybe, to do another presentation, calling all the things...
Yeah, year-end review.
Yeah, that year-end review was really...
Already done.
Is that...
Already done?
It's already done.
Okay.
She may not be here, because she may not be in the area to make the presentation, but she is pulling it all together for us.
Well, can we ask her? I think, yeah.
We already have asked her.
She already has asked, it sounds like she's already, maybe, or she's doing it.
No, I mean, to present.
Oh, I see, to present, yeah.
Yes, we've asked her to do that.
A little cameo.
Okay, great, thank you. Hi, good. We do have an occasion to enter into an executive session for a real estate matter, and I think, is there anything else relative?
I might have lost for what the legal matter was, I'm not sure it's necessary.
An executive statement, real estate matter.
It's been one of those a couple weeks.
Okay, a motion signify aye?
We're going into real estate.
Executive session, okay.
And that will be very brief, I promise.
And we will come out.
Paid photograph on the cover, did you use non-funds to pay for it?
I don't believe we did. I think she provided that on her own.